I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you for your attendance this evening. First on our agenda is a public hearing. If you would like to speak to this public hearing, you will just stand, state your name and your address, and address your comments to town council. Number one, council's intention to adopt an ordinance in regards to a request to vacate an unbuilt fifteen-foot-wide alley extending from Montague Street to Park Street. Is there anyone here to speak to this request? Yes, sir. You'll please stand, that's Mr. Richard Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat and I have come to oppose, I mean to approve closing this alley. It's been my, that property's been in my family since the 1900s. It was the first house built on Junkin Street, it's made of the tape. And my grandfather's worried about it, I've worried about it, that somebody's going to open it up and build townhouses and this and that. Our contention is that council closed the one behind the houses on the other side of Junkin Street. And we think the same should be done on this side of Junkin Street. Neither one of them served any purpose. And we very much request that council closes the alleyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Horn. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on this matter? We do have a letter, I believe, in opposition. And you should have that at your seat. I believe that's from 315 East Main Street. And it's a letter that is in favor of...
It's opposed.
It's opposed, but...
The letter says they would be landlocked. They mean access to their rear yard would be landlocked. Their lot would actually not be landlocked, although we'll point out that if the entire street were vacant, the alley were vacated the entire distance, there would be one landlocked lot. So basically, you could, it's Mr. Rangel's lot that has a basically independent lot back there. So it could be vacated portion of the way, either direction. It couldn't be vacated completely through, unless Mr. Rangel would vacate the interior of the lot lot.
And I believe Mr. Rangel is here this evening. That alleyway has been somewhat of contentious alleyway for several years with the school board office being there. And many times that alleyway would be blocked so that there could not be access to the school board offices. And now that the school board is moving out of that facility and we don't know what might move into it. And whether we close it or keep it open, I think is something that's going to have to be decided, not by council, but by recommendation of our street committee. And I'm going to refer this matter to the street committee for investigation and to come back to council with a recommendation. Unless there's anyone else to speak to this proposal, then we will close this public hearing. And the matter is going to be referred to the street committee. Christiansburg Town Council is now in session.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we take up any action regarding the actual meeting itself, I would ask the agenda to be amended in two fashions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I'd ask for us to, under section 2.237-371183, that we have a, go into closed session later in the evening. That would involve either acquisition or disposition of real property. And therefore, I feel that if we don't go into closed session, that an open discussion, an open session, would adversely affect our bargaining position and perhaps our negotiating strategy on that matter. I would ask for the agenda to be amended in that regard.
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes, and the second motion I would make, it's preliminary matter. We'll take one at a time.
Yeah, let's get a second to that one.
Sure.
Second.
A motion and a second for amendment to the agenda to put a closed session. And I'll make that item number five with the adjournment being item number six. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose no. And...
And the second amendment, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, we are, I think it's item under 2.1B, it's the revenue recovery. I'm very passionate about this item. I'd like to take action tonight. But because of what it entails, and we had a public hearing last session on the 15th of January, and we have, of course, town managers out tonight, and importantly, eight council members out tonight, there's some discussion we would have on that matter. I think it's best if we wait until the next session on the 19th of February to discuss and/or perhaps pass that ordinance. Again, I just feel like it's something that we need to have all six members of council present on because of the, there's a lot of questions that people may have and a lot of discussion we might have. I think it may be best to do that. And again, I'd like to take action tonight, but I think that's the best way to do it. Respectfully, I would ask the agenda to be amended to table that till the 19th of February.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to table the proposed ordinance on the rescue squad revenue recovery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And we will strike that from the agenda and table that item until the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Christiansburg Town Council is now in session, and you have a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. I hope you've had an opportunity to read through those. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Some move?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 4th, February... January, is it?
February. We just turned it down.
That was January 15th.
That's been three weeks ago. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Thank you. This is a portion of the meeting where we hold. We have any citizen who would like to address council on any matter. And I wonder if there's anyone here that would like to speak to council on any matter this evening. Ms. Turner? You can, or you can stand right there.
Connie Turner, Allegheny Street. I just want to commend the town for what I perceive as a very, very good job of the snow removal on the streets and everything during the last two episodes, especially the first one. Then I'd also like to say that I am pleased to say there has been an officer in the area that has ticketed a couple people for running their stop sign there at the Allegheny and Canaan. I am wondering if a second stop sign on top of the one that's there, so a double stop sign, might cause more attention for people. I noticed the other day, and I'd seen it before, that Cherry Lane, and I think it's Second Street, Second and Third, Cherry Lane, they have a double stop. And I personally feel that it has helped with the speed on the street. I also feel that it has helped with the traffic there. I've heard a lot of people complain to me about having this there, and ask me, "Do I like it?" And I said, "Well, yes, for just like what I said. It has helped with the speed, I think, and it has helped with the number." But I'm in favor of the police setting there more often to give more tickets. But also, why people don't see the stop signs, I don't know. It's just like why they still continue to come down when they were fixing the road and it said "No" through traffic. But possibly, and I don't know, but double stop signs.
Okay, I can't make excuses for people who run the stop sign. And I think those of us who use that street real often, we're not accustomed to that stop sign popping up in front of us. And I came to a screeching stop the other day because it just didn't register with me that there was stop there and I wasn't looking at the sign. But you've got a good point, and we'll refer that to the Public Works Department to see if they feel that it's necessary to put a double sign there.
We have a sign that's depressing, that in sound, because I saw one today, I can't remember what street you had a double stop sign.
That might help, but I think until people get accustomed to that sign being there, there may be a few that'll...
But it's been well over a month that it's been there.
May I ask Ms. Turner a quick question? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sure.
Sorry.
Probably a good thing.
Whatever. Flip a pole with you.
Ms. Turner, is there one of those signs, a stop sign, is upcoming on that street as well, prior to that stop sign?
No. I don't think so.
Okay.
But before, when there was a sign that had the arrow about the speed limit too.
That wasn't following you?
That didn't help either. I just think a lot of our citizens, unfortunately, are creatures of habit and they don't pay any attention to anything new until it probably hits them in the pocketbook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on any matter? If not, then we'll close the citizens' hearing and move on. Item number three, we have a purchase order for two garbage trucks to be delivered fiscal year 213 and 214, 2014. And I believe, Mr. Winfield, you have some information on that purchase order.
It'd be two garbage trucks. The chassis would be $207,066. The outfit those would be $427,220. And then accessory equipment would be $3380.
And they will be delivered when?
Next fiscal year. But we would have basically pre-ordered to get them current business.
And these are the ones with the arm to pick up the garbage cans, all right?
We've discussed previously of going ahead and authorizing the procurement of these, recognizing that the funding will be in next year. So I would make a motion that we do it.
Second.
Motion and a second to place the order for the two garbage trucks to be delivered next fiscal year.
Only discussion I have, Mr. Mayor, is just one more time, the cost of the actual chassis was a quarter? Thank you.
And we have determined the two garbage trucks right now, they are ready to be replaced.
Yes, they are.
And what goal will we do with them?
We'd probably...
I'm sorry, surplus?
Surplus, probably got deals.
Put a snowplow on them.
That total's about $638,000.
And we're still anticipating, even though we're not initially going to release anybody from Public Works. If there were attrition, those jobs would be closed when those employees, when we lose them through attrition.
Well, or if there's a need for additional Public Works over time, which might happen.
Okay.
Which, of course, we've had a lot of Public Works through the years, just based on what we've obtained.
All right, all in favor of purchasing the trucks for delivery next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Thank you. Mr. Barber, Mr. Stipes, Finance Committee report.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Stipes. We met on January the 25th at a Finance Committee meeting with our Finance Director, Manager, Assistant Manager, Mr. Stipes and myself, and Mr. Van Hoosier was there. And there's a proposed budget policy that we have been looking at. And there's some tweaks to it and some changes to it that, once we reviewed it and sat down with Ms. Tweedy, felt more comfortable in adopting this policy. I think it gives us a better operational ability than maybe the policies we've had in the past. And Val, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to jump on that one, too.
Okay. Inspector takes my copy.
Yeah.
What we were trying to do with this budget policy was first to lay out what was required under Virginia Code. So the first section talks about pretty much what we're required to do under Virginia Code, and then what we have in our town ordinance. And then to put into policy what our process is for budget development, which is pretty much what we've been following all along, but it kind of puts it into writing. The real changes, or I shouldn't, they're not really changes, but it's just kind of a way of documenting things that we discussed several budget meetings ago that we had about budget modifications. Because one of the focuses that we have is trying to work with directors and making sure that things are spent in the proper categories. So if it's office supplies, it's office supplies. If it's vehicle fuel, it's vehicle fuel, and charging them to the appropriate line items. But sometimes the budget numbers, they say, "Well, okay, I've got some money in office supplies. I can buy that other thing that I need, but it's in the wrong cost category." So rather than have them charge it to the line where there's a budget dollar, it's for them to be able to modify the line items within their budget so that they're not exceeding budget. They can't change salaries or wages or add capital equipment or anything like that. It just lets them modify within their already approved budget so that we can put costs of the categories in which they belong. And that's kind of a normal process that you go through when you're projecting a budget, you know, 18 months out. Sometimes you don't get all your line items quite right. And, you know, you got a little bit here, but you're a little short here. And to move them around, that's kind of a normal practice. So it covers that. And then it also talks about, one of the things that we brought to you several weeks ago that we had incorporated as a part of this policy was the situation with trying to bring in central purchasing and moving personnel from one department to another and moving those budget dollars that go with it without that having to be a full-blown budget amendment and coming to council. So that we could move the positions around, but it would never increase full-time employees in any way. And it can't ever increase the budget overall.
Pardon me, Ms. Tweedy, can you hold for just a moment? We have a brand-new sound system, and it picks up every little whisper, every little pin drop. And we're getting a little feedback here, too. So if you're whispering or talking, please hold that until after the meeting. Okay, Ms. Valerie, go ahead.
Okay. So after that discussion that we had, that everybody felt that they were comfortable with, Barry and myself being able to make those changes as long as it was not increasing the budget overall, it was not increasing the number of full-time employees at all. So it was just really shifting costs from one department to another department. And as far as capital goes, if you have a little bit of savings on this capital item and you're a little over on that capital item, and it allows you to do that, but it would not allow you to say not buy something that was on the capital list just because you didn't want to buy it. So everything would be approved by council. You can't suddenly decide, "Oh, I had a bulldozer in there. I think I'll buy a garbage truck instead." So everything that was on the list would still be purchased. And if they wanted to change from buying a garbage truck to buying a bulldozer, that would have to come to the council for approval. So it's really just kind of allowing us to manage the budget a little bit better internally without having to bring every budget decision and change for approval. But anything that really modifies the budget drastically or increases the budget at all would have to come before the council.
So it's a pure efficiency issue?
Yeah, it really is. It's just kind of documenting what you've already told us we could do, but we just really wanted to put it in writing so that everybody's comfortable with it.
I think there's two statements in here that highlight just what you're talking about. One of them is on the last page under C. It says, "Budget modifications may not result in the addition of full-time employees," which is a good point. And then in D, it says, "Budget modifications greater than $10,000 requires council's approval." And that's whether it be in capital acquisition or project change.
I guess my question would be, does council feel comfortable with a $10,000 limit on that, or lower?
I feel pretty good with $10,000. I mean, when you look at the size of the budget we're working with.
It was a feeling of the Finance Committee that this was certainly a figure that we could live with.
My only, just looking through it, I see that, I think it was budget development. I see that we have item C in July 1st, the town council shall approve the budget. And that is our crunch time at that point. But I notice in there we don't have anything to where, I'll, me personally, I would like to see us have a deadline for a working budget to be presented to council. Whereas either we get it three months in advance, or... So I think in years past, what's made us go over is that we got it late, we didn't get enough meetings in in time, and then we go over July 1st. So is there any reason why we can't have a deadline to where we can get a working, or at least a work, some sort of a workbook or...
Like a first draft?
First draft.
Buy it by a certain date?
By a certain date.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, and I don't know that we need, I don't know whether you have an exact date, whether you want to say March 1 or...
I wasn't going to say January 1st.
Within, you know, or within ninety days of...
Actually, I was going to let, I mean, unless we want the table, but I was going to let, I know I put you on the spot, Valerie, I'm sorry. It's something I've been thinking about, I just hadn't...
My goal is always that you guys have a first draft by March 30th, by the end of March, at the absolute latest. I'd like it to be earlier. I'd like it to be early March. Most of the time we can do that. But I guess if I had to put a date down, I would say not later than March 30th.
Well, that's pretty good.
But my goal to be earlier in March than that.
Because you got three months after that. So that would be good.
The July 1 date, obviously, is when we start our new fiscal year, so it's got to be in place by then.
The law says, Virginia law actually says it has to be in place by July 1 or we close our doors, nobody gets paid.
Do you recall when you gave us that working budget tissue?
Off the top of my head, I want to say it was like March 15th. We had our first draft and our first budget meeting.
I feel comfortable with, I mean, do we want to go by meetings or a specific date?
Maybe you could do, you said the second meeting in March? That what you're referring to?
Do that, by the second meeting in March.
Second council meeting in March?
A draft.
First draft.
Yeah, that's good.
All the departments involving turned in their requests?
Yes, I've got the last ones in, I think, Friday. So it's crunch time to start putting along the other now. So if we added to B, and a first draft could be presented to council by the second meeting in March?
Yes.
Or no later than the second meeting in March?
Right. In no later than that, it would be...
Do we need to adopt the budget policy for future reference in other years down the road? Would that help you, Valerie?
Well, the policy would cover us from now until we decide that we need to change it, or the policy set out.
That's, I think, I thought that was the intent of this. And again, we're, and I think that the second meeting in March is a good date, isn't it? We're, I am prepared tonight to, with the amendments or the changes, I'm prepared to move that we accept the budget policy.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to adopt the budget policy with the few amendments that we've mentioned here this evening. Discussion? I think for this matter, Ms. Clerk, if you will poll council.
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye. The motion carries. We now have a budget policy in place. And the next item is an amendment to the budget for fiscal year 2012-13. And you have a listing, I believe, of those amendments. And we'll need to take action on that tonight.
I've also asked Mrs. Tweedy to explain this thing a little deeper, more in layman's terms than, because it has a...
Why don't you mention each item, Ms. Tweedy, and let us ask any questions?
I'd also ask Mrs. Wilburn to be here also for one of the audits.
The total increase for expenditures was a total of $292,000. That is made up of $150,000 for the approved acquisition of the acreage over on Scattergood Drive, $102,000 for a bore under the railroad through the water runs, and $40,000 for compensation consultant. And that was the item that they wanted back into the top of the ballot, so...
What we are looking to do is put out a request for proposals for some assistance with, from consultants to look at a number of items related to compensation for employees. That consists of an evaluation of all full-time employee pay scales to approximately 140 positions, as well as making recommendations for pay ranges for those positions. Additional further evaluation and recommendation regarding the best compensation plan that the town should adhere to for paying our employees. As you all may recall, we currently have a freeze in place for our pay steps. That was put into effect July 1 to give us some time to evaluate what we're doing, why we're doing it, and is it the best thing to proceed with. And so that was buying us some time in order to do that without further obligating ourselves along that pay scale, excuse me, pay step system. We are also looking for recommendations from the consultant regarding an organization-wide performance evaluation system and, as well as basically blueprints for the forms that would be administered by each department in support of that performance evaluation system, as well as implementation and training guidelines and plans for implementing all of these and the costs associated with them. If there's any money left over, which we would see, it would be potentially assisting with some of that training or at least providing the guidance for us to administer that in-house. So we are looking to put forth all of that within the RFP for the cost that's included in the budget.
Well, in our discussion at Finance Committee, among the things we talked about is, it was felt that if we have a consultant, we get an outside unbiased opinion. I know that possibly we could do this thing internally, but when you really don't, I mean, you have too many feelings involved because it's their own, I guess their own pay that's involved in this, or their own benefits. And if I understand correctly, this is a mid-range, I mean, this is what you want to spend, but the fees for those things are quite varied.
They are. I came up with that number based on conversations that I've had with Blacksburg and Martin County of what the market is doing right now with consultants for these types of compensation studies. So I feel like it's a conservative number. I feel like we will be coming to the table needing to do a decent amount of the legwork ourselves as far as preparing the job descriptions and the like. There are compensation consultants who are happy to do that for us, but in a cross-station effort, we want to do that piece of it ourselves and present them with completed information for them to then take and use to develop the compensation structure for us.
Is this a common practice amongst counties which border Christiansburg? When's the last time that this consultant has used, say, by Blacksburg?
They're currently utilizing it right now.
Right now? Right now?
Not every county uses them.
Okay, and this is something that you feel like could not be done in-house? This is something we need to go outside to do?
Well, you know, the felt, we, we felt that possibly it could be done in-house, but, you know, again, we, the, the thing that kind of highlighted it to us was that it's an unbiased, it's an unbiased recommendation. And the fact that, you know, if we had to do it ourselves, are we going to be pulling people away from their day job and spending six months getting this thing together? So we're losing, you know, that portion of their productivity as an employee. So, you know, it's, it's not, may not be the most popular way to go, but I think it's, it's a trend that a lot of places are going to. I know in the past, we have unofficially polled other locations and localities to determine pay scales and pay ranges. They may go a couple of, they may go one year and do all the town managers and assistant town managers. The next year, they do police department, police chiefs, and it was more, I think, on a department head basis. And I think this gives us a pretty good concept if, you know, if we have a job that, I, I don't know whether they'd come back and say, cut everybody's pay 20%, I don't, I don't think so. But, but, but the same token, it gives us an outside look, or gives someone a chance from the outside to look in and see if there are things that we can tweak, that we can make better, that we, that would benefit the town in the long run.
Isn't it fact that this is not just living pay, this is the total compensation package? And it will be, they will be giving us the rationale of how they come up with what they do and so forth, so that we can judge whether it's appropriate to make the changes or not.
What, what we're looking to do is, is the entire pay step system that we currently utilize is looking at that for all 142 full-time positions that we have and saying, is that the best way to move forward with compensating our employees? Or do we put every full-time position that we have on a completely new scale? There's the, the broadbanding that Blacksburg utilizes, there's a pay range type of format that the county uses. There's a lot of different philosophies toward compensating your full-time staff, whereas we have historically utilized the pay steps. But as we're trying to move more toward the paper performance type of mentality, we feel like there are other systems out there that are probably a better way to go if you're looking at being able to, across the board with all of our employees, regardless of tenure, be able to really put them on more of a performance-based evaluation program.
We had talked, we had talked about the.
You go. You know, just going forward, if we go forward with this, I want to make sure that we're looking at total compensation package. I'm talking about sick leave, vacation time, everything should be included in it. When you're comparing a system of what you're going to do, how else can you establish what the frequencies of increases are going to be? And how do you handle those? So you've got to have the total package.
I think, I'm going, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to piggyback on Jim. I, me, me personally, not a big consultant person, but I mean, it's sort of before me wants type of scenario with me. I'm looking for somebody, I mean, we are, this is a council-approved item, so I mean, I'm sure Becky, you know, we're looking for somebody dynamic in the piggyback on what Jim said. I mean, we shouldn't just be looking at public jobs comparisons. I mean, you definitely got to look at the private network that's out in our local area. And I would hope that whatever company we pick will use that in most scenarios, public and private, to take a look at the overall picture. Because I know we've received items just in the past couple of months, and we're, we're either close or even with what other municipalities pay, but I'd like for it to be a little bit more dynamic. And you did say there is going to be an evaluation. They will recommend an evaluation tool for that, because I know that's something I think we're desperate to get about.
I'm a big believer in merit-based. And I like that, and, and I've always appreciated that. And not more of the, I hate to say union mentality, but that's not the way I view it. I like it to be more along the lines of a merit-based. But as far as the, and I agree with Mr. Van Hoosier, Mr.?
Barb.
Barb.
It's hard to say.
But I, I guess what I, I guess my, my one item that I guess I'm somewhat concerned about is, what if they come back after they evaluate, because they're going to be doing this from the ground up, I would imagine, if it's going to be a true, fully comprehensive study. And they say, well, you're just simply over what you need to be employed in this particular area or this particular, compared with this other locality, if you see where I'm getting at? You need to cut your workforce by 10 in public work because of this. I'm, I'm just calling, I mean, what if they come back with some of the recommendations like that?
We're, we're not approaching it from a workforce evaluation standpoint. Do we have enough employees in each department?
Or too many?
Right, what we're doing is saying, we have a laborer, the laborer is paid X dollars to X dollars on our current pay step system. Is that an accurate range for them to be compensated under, keeping in mind the entire compensation package that we're offering? So we want them to evaluate, is that position adequately compensated? Do we need to, on a new scale, adjust it up? We may even be adjusting some down. In that case, if, if they said the, the labor rates that we currently pay are above market to a degree that, that's too much, too much above market than where we decided we want it to be. What we would anticipate would actually be then scaling that position down for any new hire. So if you're an existing employee and you were above that scale, we wouldn't say to you. Right, we wouldn't say to you, we're going to cut your pay, but any new hire that we made would be on that new scale.
Will they, will they include the private sector comparisons as well?
They will do what, you know, what, whatever we ask them to do, and we can certainly ask them for that. You know, the compensation consultants have access to so much more data when it comes to that than, than what we do, and access to what their entire compensation packages are within the private sector. So I think that that's absolutely something that we can ask them.
I, I think you're going to have to do that and look at the compensation packages to come up with realistic things. Any other statement I would make is for them to tell you what kind of compensation, if that's what you're looking for, that each position should get, they've got to have a job description first.
Right, and, and that's the legwork that we're anticipating, having in-house that.
And you said right now that, I believe you said Blacksburg is using a consultant of this variety?
They are, they're, they're actually utilizing them instead. And what they're doing is taking a look at their broadband system, because they're not entirely satisfied with how that's worked, none of it's been in place for a couple of years. And so they're, they're looking at how to modify it, so they're also currently reevaluating it.
And again, this is strictly a numbers evaluation, this is not a workforce evaluation as far as, it's description page, yes, but it's not. Okay, so we're not worried about them coming back to us and saying, well, you've just simply got to get rid of 10 people here.
No.
Just going to cut costs to you, this is strictly, strictly how we, what our employees make compared with the market, both private and public, they're going to be utilized. If that could be a part of the, is that anticipated to be a part of the process at this point? Is to make sure they're going to be comparing not only private, I'm sorry, not public, but also private? Or has that been contemplated or?
We hadn't necessarily contemplated who to compare it to, more than saying, you're the expert, do a market comparison. So whatever market means to them, but certainly with this discussion, we can make sure that they understand that to us, market means.
Well, I would, I would be sure that they didn't restrict it just to municipalities.
Right, I agree.
It, it's got to be the other, but you're going to write a request for an RFP, or someone is, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you can brief us on what, what you're going to have in there. I'm not asking to read it, but just brief us what it's going to be requesting.
Be able to chance to look at it. If we could, I mean, if, if, that'd be great, if we could.
Yeah.
Not that, it's not a distrust issue, I'm just wondering what's in this, so I understand, because I still have even some more questions right now about it, but I'd be much better to be able to read it to, to ask you a more intelligent question than what I'm asking right now. But, but, so if we're looking at the 150, the 102, and then the 40 for the consultant, that makes up the 292.
Correct.
And the consultant of that is a wide-range average, if you will, at this point.
Yes.
That's what we call a sway, and I'll, I'll tell you what that is like.
Then we just want to make sure that, that, that when you get, if you go this consulting route, that, that this person is doing what you want and achieving what you want. Because we see so many times, these consulting things end up being just a waste of money. And as money, tight as money is right now, and I think it's just really important that we drive in the right, that right direction. If we go that way, or maybe we've even done it veteran house, you know? I mean, that, that, that's, we'll leave it up to you, Blake, to, to make those decisions.
The tangible outcome from it is specific numbers for each position. It's a specific compensation program, it's a specific job evaluate, or excuse me, performance evaluation system. So they're very tangible things that we're looking for to be completed on the other side. It's not theoretical or, you know, anything like that.
What's the, it's not really stellated, but what's the window these typical studies last? Is it a five-year window? I know, it can be a decade, can be.
No more than, than a couple of years before you really need to make sure that, that you're starting to look back at the market. And, and I think that what has happened is that there hasn't been one done for the entire organization for some time. And so I think that over time, there's been some fluctuation ones that have maybe kept up with the market better than others. So we have some discrepancies.
Well, I, I know that some of our first questions were concerned about step increases. But I, I think we're overdue to do the total evaluation. And I want to see, and if we approve this as 40, that's a not to exceed number. And if it goes over that, you'll come back and say, I've got the proposals, then can I go ahead? If it exceeds that, and ask for proof.
And you might, you probably get them all over the board, I would, I would imagine.
I, I anticipate all of these.
I, I would also, as, as we alluded to here, I would also feel that, you know, they're going to evaluate an equipment operator here, and an equipment operator maybe in a construction job or in, in the same area. So you're going to, you're going to kind of get a general idea of inside and outside.
Yep, yeah, they'll, they'll use the regional comparisons.
I think so. There's another, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There is another couple of, can we untell?
One other item in this is the last item, which was the, the projects in the 2012-13 budget that were capital improvements that were marked for bond proceeds through the ring tube. In the 13, 12-13 budget, we had as revenue at $2.8 million from a bond financing. It looks like by June 30th, we are only estimating to expend just over a million dollars on those projects. They're not going to complete by June 30th. And rather than pull the, the loan for 2.8 million at, at this point in time, we felt it might make more sense to use some of the fund balance that we needed to reassign anyway to be within that fund balance policy, to use that to move those projects to June 30th, and then relook at that financing in our 13-14 budget. Rather than pulling a loan now and then working on the 13-14 budget at the same time, is, is to try and just postpone that financing until we get done with the 13-14 budget and know what we need to do moving forward with the 13-14 budget.
Two, two questions in it. Number one, what's the interest rate on that?
Right now, the last bond offering that they went out and did was 2.37.
That low?
Yes.
Okay, and then number two, then, is that, and I'm not trying to get into the budget discussion at all, so the bond from 2012, 2013, then for the capital improvements that we talked about?
Right.
Then we're not looking at an additional bond then this next year, or you don't know that part yet? I'll, I'll leave it alone if you don't notice, say, no, that's what?
I'm going to say probably.
Okay.
Probably, because the rest of this pro, these projects isn't going to get done this year.
Okay.
So yes.
Make sure.
We will be looking at something new next year, which is kind of why I think we'd be better off to postpone it. And in, in the budget process, they now are doing, they call it their summer offering, where they're, they used to only do bonds twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. Now they're doing one in the summer as well.
So you're anticipating there would be an additional bond on top of what we would, this one we had from 2012, 2013 for the next?
No, because what I'm saying is we wouldn't do this 2.8 bond right now.
They will do the 2.8. And what she's looking at is taking the median 50,000 out of the reserves.
Right.
And it still keeps us above our ceiling.
That brings kind of the fund balance down below that 45% number that we needed to get to.
Okay, is that the last item on that list?
That's the last item.
Okay, we need to take action on these budget amendments. And if you have further questions, particularly on the consultant, Becky is available to, to answer your questions. The only question I have, Becky, is the timeline. I don't know how long it'll take to do the, the survey that the consultant does. We're not looking at the implementation of a recommendation in the next fiscal year.
I would like to think so.
I hope so.
It would be.
Think so, yeah.
Okay.
We, we know, we, we've timed it out so that based on when we went into our freeze with the new hires, July 2012, how we have brought them in as employees on the pay scale, it's really bought us about a 14-month window before them being under a freeze starts to actually harm them financially by not being able to move through our compensation program. So that puts us to about November of 2013. So we kind of have that month in mind, just in the sense of, we, we need to know what we're doing, whether that is having a good implementation plan in the future, but we know that it's coming, whether it's underway, whether it's already been done, or whether we have looked at this and said, it's just not feasible. And then we end up back with the same.
Okay, we're looking at the next fiscal year, then we need to go ahead and get cracking on this so that you can get your RFP ready. Any other questions, gentlemen? Do I hear a motion to adopt the, the budget amendments as presented to us?
So I'm, I'll second that based on the qualifications we've put on it here about the RFP reviews.
Okay, here again, I think, Ms. Clerk, we should poll council on this question. And the question is the approval of the budget amendments.
Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Okay, that's a 5-0, and that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Anything else, Mr. Barber?
No, sir.
Town manager? You want to do the closed session first?
That's what you could.
I think, actually, I think you moved, you moved it fast, I said, but we're still good.
We're still good.
I moved the closed session.
Yeah, fine.
All right, let's go ahead and get the town manager's report, because I don't think there's going to be any action after our closed session.
The bills to be paid for February 8?
On the second page, the first item on the top, $11,800. I was just curious about the pond relocation.
I'm sorry.
All the lanes.
First one?
Second page, first item.
Is that something we did, or somebody else did, and we had to relocate it, or, I'm just curious? The first item on the second page.
Oh, I'm not sure on that one, that would be a, yeah, it's an.
Yeah, why don't you just check it out and sometime let me know?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's a stormwater pond, it might be in connection with the town of Hills Park.
Okay, just let me know.
I'm moving to be approved bills.
Second, I do.
Motion in a second, pay the bills, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close and no. Mr. Wingfield, Ms. Valerie, pay the bills. Anything else, Mr. Wingfield?
Public hearing for you to set for a judicial use permit for property at 970 Radford Street. This is the former Christiansburg Childcare Center out on Radford Street that's recently sold. They're requesting residential use in the B3 General Business District. And I'd recommend you set the public hearing for March 5th. The planning commission public hearing is set for February 11th.
So moved?
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second, set that public hearing for March 5th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, no. Thank you.
Just like to announce the town's been approved for FEMA disaster assistance of $26,024.81 under the Public Assistance Program associated with the Virginia severe storms and straight-line winds, torrential declaration. Also, let you know, the planning commission's completed a draft of the Trappanac Compensable Plan Transportation Chapter that they're going to be submitting to VDOT. There was a copy in your council packet in your seats. If you have any comments, just let us know in the next month or so.
That was the June 29th or 30th big wind that we had, 26,000?
And that is just our receipts from the state, yes, 26,000. I think total damage was around, was another 44,000, and that was received in donations, and 7,000 was covered by insurance.
Kind of got a little bit lucky, it seems like, with some surrounding localities.
Yes. Also, let you know, Michelle's forwarded an email with an attachment from the resolution of Blacksburg approval for the joiner, and just remind you, the public hearing for that's going to be February 19th. Also, let it announce, Becky Wilburn's now certified professional in human resources by the Human Resource Certification Institute. Also, let you know, I'm providing a copy of the draft ordinance for revision to Chapter 2 Administration, and that's basically in regards to submission applications, basically unpaid taxes before we take any applications, you're going to have to have your taxes paid. Also, I'm giving you a copy of Solid Waste Chapter Amendment, and that's in regards to definitions of perous or ree, reebs. Both of those will be coming up next council meeting.
All right, that's one we need to get familiar with. We probably have more complaints about that sort of thing than anything that I want to address.
And also, let you know, tomorrow night, from 5 to 7, there's a citizens' information meeting in regards to the VDOT 81 study, and that's for your Tier 2 NEPA environmental study. That's going to be at the Falling Branch Elementary School Cafeteria. That's 5 to 7 tomorrow night. And what they're studying is widening, continuing widening 81 from exit 118 to exit 143. And also, let you know, it's acceptable, I may go ahead and add the parking for the Christmas store to the next street committee agenda. It's going to have street committee meeting next meeting.
And if you'll please add the closing of the alleyway?
Yes.
For the street, street committee. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, I've got one request. We have a representative to the New River Valley Planning District Commission, but they meet at a time when it's awfully difficult for folks who work to get to those meetings, and I just wonder if any of you would be interested in serving on that, on that commission? That's the one headed up by Kevin Byrd.
Henry's already serving on the board, aren't you?
Yep, Henry's serving on the board, but Henry can't get to the meetings, and...
There's been a scheduling conflict, I know that the other council had some issues with it prior to mine, so I've been on there for five years now, and I wanted to leave it, I wanted to leave it to our council, but I would like to say, the mayor knows this, a lot of the other municipalities have their planning commission members, and actually the majority of them. So, it's probably a good, good item for one of our planning commissioners, if they'd like to be on there.
All right, lady, is it the third or fourth?
It's, last Thursday, and it's typically at 6:00, but I have other priorities coming up. Unfortunately, every Thursday, it seems like, so instead of...
I will check with Nicole, see if she has people on the planning commission that would be interested in serving. If not, then I can do it on a temporary basis.
Well, I mean, mayor, I'll be, I'll definitely be there every attempt to get there, but, and another thing to remember, it's not the, I know when we say planning commission, it's not necessarily a planning commission like we have here in town. It's more of a, I mean, I know they're considering changing their name, and there was a few that we had in...
Just Regional Planning Assistance Agency, essentially?
Right.
And basically, they're established around the state by region, and they serve, basically the whole New River Valley. They serve Blasky, Jaws, Boyd, Montgomery County, Radford City, and several towns in the New River Valley.
Okay. I'll talk to Nicole, and if we don't have anyone on that board that would be interested, I'll fill in, you know, until we can find someone on a permanent basis. And Henry appreciates your serving.
And before we go, before we move into the next, I know we're looking to go into closed session, since we were bringing some things up, I think we all got an email, this I did in the last week or so, about the, I think, what was it, the exhaust on cars?
Yeah.
I probably missed, I remember the names.
Terry Town Road?
Yes, I believe so. And I just want to bring it to council. We've had some email correspondence with the gentleman and his wife, both, and I mentioned to them that I was going to bring it up this evening as well. I was hoping they would be in attendance tonight to kind of inform us specifically what was going on, but I don't know if you always want to refer that issue. We have a noise ordinance in place right now, so I don't know how we want to, if we want to act or anything, if we want to maybe just refer that over. I don't think that's really the street committee item.
I think it did go, the chief?
Chief Sisson still?
Yeah, Chief Sisson has been in touch with the family.
Right, right, correct.
He's looking into it, and I also referred the complaint to police.
Actually, and that's what I told him, I said, "It just sounds like something we would need to give over to the chief and pray him to look into." So, that's what I want to make sure of and make sure you got brought tonight.
And the chief's already contacted.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Anything else? Then we need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, go into closed session. We need to poll council on this matter, Ms. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
That's 5-0 vote, we're in closed session, or will be. I'm going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back into closed session.
With the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law, and the only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Clerk, will you poll council, please, now?
Yes, sir. Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
All right, that's a second 5-0 vote, and we're out of closed session, unless there's other business, anything?